We will call our meeting to order. Roll call please, Amy.
Edinger.
Here.
Gookin.
Over here.
Miller.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
English.
Here.
McEvers.
Okay, I do not see our pastor here tonight for the invocation, but we will rise and Dan, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight. We will move on to the consent calendar. Who will have the duties of the consent calendar tonight?
I'd go for it. I would make a motion, we approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution Number 16-030, which is, has an agreement with GE Water Process Technologies for the tertiary membrane filtration equipment, the approval of S-3-12 final plat subdivision for Coeur d'Alene Place, the approval of the lease with the Chamber of Commerce for the use of city-owned parking lots for the Fourth of July, the approval of the addendum to the agreement with Seringa Property Management Services at 106 Homestead Avenue, declaration of surplus patrol investigations and range vehicles, and approval of justice assistance grant and MOU with Cootney County. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Roll call please.
Edinger.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yep.
Evans.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to public comments tonight for our vast audience of people. If there's anyone that would wish to come, and we're going to be 100% in our public comments tonight, so Mr. Wilson wishes to say something.
I just want to thank you for entering into a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, again, and for the parking for fireworks. And I also want to thank you for the great partnership that you've had with our organization on a number of events and activities throughout the course of the year, and look forward to prosperous future for our fair city. There's about 3,100 people registered for a big event on Sunday and about, over 2,000 of them are from out of the area, so should be another great weekend. Thank you.
Steve, just a quick question. How does the half Ironman compare with the full Ironman in the same date as far as participants?
It is about double. I think last year they had about 1,600. You might recall that a couple of years ago, they did top out at the full at 3,000, but last year and the year before, they were, they were both, both years were under 17 or 1,800, so at 3,100, it's a pretty good, pretty good chunk.
So moving the half Ironman to this date in this location, and they're pleased with it?
Half seem to be incredibly popular for racers around the country. We do have about 1,000 quote "locals," and in the full, we only had about 200 or so. So obviously, it's a race that many that are in better shape than I are able to do.
Great, that's good news. And then the, the full again is at the end of, end of August.
It is the third week of August this year, and then it'll move to the fourth weeks for the next four years after that.
Any reports on those numbers coming in yet?
I have not heard from them. They have been rather tight-lipped on that one, touting the success of this one, I think.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to give a public comment? I don't see any. We'll move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? Dan?
Well, I have a question. I'm not sure where it goes on the financial statements that come with her packet, and it's a small item, but there's a line item for community canopy for $1,674. I'm curious what the community canopy is.
That is a line item for the Urban Forester as we collect funds for developers that haven't put trees in and use it for that. We also use it for pruning as we do the overlay programs and things like that.
Okay.
I just had a quick thing. Just wanted to let you know, I was, I'm heading down to the Association of Idaho Cities meetings in the next couple of days, and there's a couple of great, it looks like programs in there on public works, some contracting items that are new and some city planning items, so I'm looking forward to bringing back some information to share with you and staff.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
I could mention that I'm wearing a tie, and apparently you're not supposed to do that, but I'm not alone.
So I wanted to announce that we have a new deputy city administrator, and he's homegrown in Sam Taylor, so welcome, Sam. During the time that you were selected, up until the time that you reported, we have accumulated a very long list of things for you to do. Basically, everything that somebody else didn't want to do went on that list.
That's what it looks like.
So, anyway, welcome, Sam. We're glad you're here. You've been here now for just a little over a week, and, and you've hit the ground running, so welcome. We're happy that you're here, and we're happy that you're home. So appreciate that.
And he's wearing a tie.
He's wearing a tie, yeah. So we will move on to other business. We have Resolution Number 16-031, Ward of Bid and Approval of Contract with Gino Construction for the Fire and Police Storage, Storage Office Building and Carport Project, and we have Deputy Fire Chief Waschko here tonight.
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank you for your time. During the general obligation bond, we put together in the bond a storage facility for fire apparatus and resources, trying to get it out of the weather. It's kind of a little rough on it, sitting out in there in snow and the sun. And then PD to increase their capability for growth. And the project came together, it kind of grew in concept a little bit and increased in overall need as PD started realizing that they could really plan for a large growth in the future, up to a dozen people into that building. We moved forward with it, and we ended up with that. We needed to hire an architect and get that in so they could do the architectural along with the engineering on some of the projects. And it grew a little bit beyond our original funds that we had, 810,000 in the bond for the project of the carport, the storage facility, and this PD office/storage facility. Some of that is because of hiring the architect. It started whittling away at the 810,000, and we have fees that we had to, permit fees, things like that, so it started to whittle down. And as the price came in, we still felt that it was a very reasonable purchase and a very sensible thing to do for the department and for the city to allow for that growth and protect our equipment. And the price came out at 848,000 to construct the structure, and that's all three of them. We went with consolidating them into a three bid, I mean, a single bid for the three projects because we felt we could get a better price having one contractor do the whole project. And we were fortunate with General Construction, they came in at a reasonable price, what we felt would be amicable and workable with the use of some impact fees to help us finish up this project, and that would help with the infrastructure through PD and their need. We really think that the money spent will be, you know, of good purpose for those impact fees itself, and the gain and the growth that we get from it, I think is very amicable to the city itself.
Okay. Questions for Jim? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, what equipment do you have that's being stored outside?
We have our mass casualty rig, which is designed to take care of a major incident. It's a big storage van, and the paint's kind of getting itself beat off of it. We have a trench rescue vehicle. We have a flatbed trailer. We have three trailers, one for canine rescue, one, two of them for urban search and rescue or our technical rescue team. And those were purchased through the BHS grants. Those trailers have probably a half a million dollars worth of equipment in them, accumulative, so having that outside with that kind of dollar value is, it'd be nice to be able to get it in there. In one location, it's also going to allow us with the depth of the building to be able to push those trailers in there with a tow vehicle in front of it, so when response time comes, it's a lot easier for us to have everything consolidated into one building, organized and available for deployment. And that is kind of really big. We have a two-hour deployment limit on our technical rescue team, and that's what's agreed upon by the state. So that helps organize that equipment, and then it also gives us a space for the ladder truck when we get our second ladder truck, our new one. We're going to keep the other one, so we have another ladder truck to put in service when the new one goes in for service. Right now, when we send our ladder truck in for service, we don't have a ladder truck in the city, and I don't see that as a real positive thing for us. So we're going to fix that problem in the future, and it gives us someplace to store it, where it stays out of the weather, it fits, it's quick access, so we'll be able to put it in service. And then the fireboat, if it has to come out during the winter, that also gives us a place to put a fireboat, and that's sitting at about 45 feet long with the trailer, so we really don't have another piece of equipment, or, I mean, a garage that we could actually store that in, that would make it work for us. So it's, it's a lot of equipment. We probably, I have nine bays, and I'll probably fill up every nine, all nine bays.
It says in the staff report that modifications to the plans in order to save costs have included splitting the building to reduce the square footage. Doesn't seem like it saved costs, though.
What was happening is when the, because the building is so big, it created a square footage issue where the fire code states that we either have to put in fire sprinklers, that you're looking at about $2 a square foot for an 18,000 billion, 18,000 square foot billion, that's a lot of money in that, or you have to do a two-hour firewall. And that two-hour firewall was probably penciling out about $18,000 to $20,000 just to do the firewall, and it has to go full height above the roof, everything else. So in order to eliminate that, we were able to split the building 20 feet. That takes care of the, the square footage, reduces it down to a square footage below what the need is for fire sprinklers, and it allowed us to get rid of the firewalls that needed to be farther. If we would've went 10-foot, we would've had to do a one-hour firewall on each building, so that would've boosted our cost again. So we built it, split it 20 feet, and the fire code according to that allows it some no firewall needs for the buildings itself, and it saved us quite a bit of money.
Does the, does the final price include items like the cabinetry and the furnishings and other things?
Not furnishings, that's not figured into it, and we really don't have any cabinetry other than the bathrooms, outfitting the bathrooms, and they'll be all ADA compliant. In the storage facility, it's basically a vinyl wrap with insulation that has a fire rating, and we have manual roll-up doors, so we reduced our costs as much as we could in that thing. And then in the PD, it's the same thing, except they're drywalling up to the ceiling. They're going to have a little more activity in there in regards to the, their need, and so we went a little bit more within their storage area, but it's still vinyl wrap on the ceiling to reduce the cost. Original concept was flat ceiling, drywall throughout, and it just, the costs were just getting outrageous. So we eliminated that and turned it more into a storage facility in the actual storage areas, but the office area is going to be complete. They'll have drywall, T-bar ceilings, carpet, you know, base. It's going to be a complete office that they can move into and grow for the future. They're going to get 2,400 square feet, plus they have another 400 square foot of storage area that could be converted into office spaces if it was ever needed, or it could continue as storage area for them.
So the, the big thing that changed is adding the police department office space. Am I correct in that? Because I don't remember that when we did the bond.
Well, it, the, the cost came out approximately the same for those two buildings, but we're twice the square footage, so you can see the cost difference. We were about $30 a square foot, and they were approximately $60 a square foot in theirs. And even at $60 a square foot, it's a pretty reasonable cost for putting together 2,400 square foot of office space and then still getting garage area, and they have, we're also part of that cost is asphalt out on the east side of the building, where they had a grassy area. We're going to add, I think, 19 more parking spaces for, for law enforcement, plus included in this is the carport for them, which covers 14 of their cars. And that also allows them to have electrical out there that maintains their computer and electronics in their cars while they're not in them and while they're in the station, you know, doing reports and whatever, so that when they come out, it's going to keep the snow off of them, keeps the sun from beating on them, and it's going to help them when they get to respond, when they need to respond, and it's terrible weather, they're going to be able to jump in a car that is being maintained, and everything should work for them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? I had a question for Captain Childers, if Captain Childers could come up for just a I know, Steve, that there's some space challenges right now in the existing PD, and you're a bit crowded in the existing building now. Who are you going to transfer over from your existing building over to the, to the new square footage?
Okay. So we've added the 2,400 square feet like Jim explained, and what we'll do is end up moving our, basically our equipment, kind of logistics person and all of his equipment out to that building. We're also going to take our IT division and house all of them out there. They are very cramped in the space they currently have. We've got three different individuals that are IT-related, whether it be from the PD or one from the city. And then we've also got our code enforcement officers in that same office, and so they all will move out to the, the new building along with one of our volunteer units as well.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions? I don't, oh, Ron.
When, when do you expect to, say, move into this building?
I would imagine that it'll probably be a 90 to 120-day build, I would think, on the building. One of the things we did to reduce costs is, instead of having all the engineering done on the buildings prior to, we incorporated that into the bid with the general contractor. They have to provide the engineering for their pole buildings, because they're pole building type structures, so that gives them a little more flexibility on how to build it. So that helped reduce the cost, but it created a little bit, probably a 30-day delay on getting permits for the two structures itself. Right now, we have the permits for the carport, so as soon as, if, if this goes through tonight and we can get them rolling, and they could get started on that immediately. So that would be a positive for, for law enforcement, and it gets the project moving, it gets them on site. We only have to pay one move-in cost. Gino's a fabulous contractor to work with, and they're going to just blend right into the next building, and they're going to provide those engineered drawings. They are already on top of that, so I would hope that'd be in Building Department in the next, you know, five to seven days, and then that'll get through the permit process. We already have the permits in process in the, in the system right now. We're just waiting for the supplements of engineering.
Okay. Any other questions? Ron.
Move for adoption of Resolution 16-31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not going to be voting for this because it, it is over budget, and I don't think, I think when we promised the public what we were going to spend on the go-bond, I think that's what we should have done. And so I'm not in favor of it because we've done a lot of work on this, and we're only seeing it now, so I will be voting no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call please, Amy.
Miller.
Yes.
Gookin.
No.
Evans.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Edinger.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. We'll move on to Resolution Number 16-032, Amendment One to the Annexation Agreement with Vista Meadows. Mike?
Good evening. This is a fairly straightforward matter. Council approved the annexation, an annexation agreement for Vista Meadows on May 3 of this year, a couple, three weeks ago or a month ago, in that it contained a provision to pay annexation fees, like most of our annexation agreements do. This one was an amount of $79,500. After that was approved, they came to our administration and asked if they could phase payment of that. It's something we've done in the past with other developers for annexation fees. The key is to track it and then to have a trigger that makes sure it gets paid, and I think the leverage we have, if we choose to do this, they've paid $22,500, and so the next part would be due when they, or before they have their final plat on Phase Two recorded. And so that's something we control, and also the issuance of building permits. So they would like to be able to not pay the full $79,500 that was agreed to in the original agreement, and defer payment of approximately $57,000 until Phase Two of the development is done.
Questions for Mike? Okay, we're looking for council action.
I move to approve Resolution Number 16-032, approving Amendment One to Annexation Agreement with Vista Meadows.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Gookin.
Yep.
Evans.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Edinger.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to public hearing. This is a legislative hearing. There is a sign-up sheet in the back for anyone that wishes to testify during this legislative hearing, and then we will have Troy Timasen give the report. Welcome, Troy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight for a public hearing. Anytime in the state of Idaho that we increase a fee by more than 5%, or if we create a new fee, we need to bring it in front of our constituents and yourselves for any input. So tonight's fees are a little bit of a diverse group. Primarily, it is commercial fees for the garbage side of it, and we also have a one new fee in there, which would be to add a extra 64-gallon recycle bin. That has never been a fee in the city of Coeur d'Alene. Every resident will get one 64-gallon bin. It is included in the existing price. If someone wanted another one, we're proposing that it come in at $5.25 per month, and then the other fee would be a fee that we bring forward as we and the Planning Department work to put in the $50 per year fee that has been worked on for the porta-potties. So let me give you a overview on the sanitation. The city of Coeur d'Alene is working diligently to bring a new contractor onboard July 1, 2016. We went out, did a request for proposals, brought in a number of proponents that wanted to do business with the city of Coeur d'Alene when it came to solid waste. None of the fee changes in here tonight affect the residential unless they wanted a second recycling bin. So with that said, excuse me, a number of these fees exist but are seldom used. So I am going to share with you, and it's in the staff report, 27 different line items that appear on the commercial rates. The city of Coeur d'Alene has 110 different line items for garbage service choices one can have. I can quickly double that if you said you wanted to have a commercial container picked up twice a week, and it's a one-and-a-half yarder, a three-yarder, and things like that. So we have 27 line items that I am proposing to modify so that we do not lose money on any one of these line items. Of these 27, 11 of them are for cleaning containers, sanitizing. We do not do a lot of that in a year, nor does the hauler do a lot of that, but we have it on the books in case someone wants to have that done. So the profit margin or the dollar increase over what Coeur d'Alene Garbage, the new provider, shown on these two slides, and again, quite a minimum number of them are being used, but with over 100 fees out there, we want to make sure that every one of them is solid. Again, this change to this hauler has significantly lowered the overall cost of the city, and that's primarily in residential. It's a 27% decrease from where we were at. Our proposal, as we've shared with you, is to bring the sanitation fund back to break even and then work towards recycling glass. Not sure what the cost is going to be. We are meeting with KEA later this week. We are having the hauler bring in containers that could be used, a glass recycling depot, if you will, and we'll continue to look for reuse and recycling opportunities out there on that. That cost is not factored in anywhere at this time, but it's something that you've given us great direction to go and get done. So that is a quick look at why we are here. I could answer. Any questions?
Questions for Troy?
Well, I guess one on the, oh.
Dan.
On that cleaning and sanitizing, you know, a number of those, is that, we assume every time they take one out, that it's already clean and sanitized. Is this just like if they, for some reason, weren't going to turn it in, but they wanted it cleaned out, or?
Yes, council member, if you'd like yours cleaned or sanitized, we have a fee for that, that they will come and get it, take it away, do all that work, and then bring it back to you. These are specifically for your larger containers, as you see, the one-yarder all the way up to a 40-yard container. So good question. All the containers going out on this contract are brand-new.
Other questions? Amy, did you have a question?
Well, on the extra recycle bin fee of $5.25, when we signed or entered into the contract a couple months ago, the understanding was that residential rates would not increase, but by adding this fee for an extra recycle container, in essence, we are increasing. Correct? Because we're...
Well, we didn't have that fee, so when we said we weren't increasing it, that fee did not exist. But yes, if you want that service, it was not on the books. So if you want two containers, there is a fee for it now.
But before, if you wanted two containers, there was not a fee for that.
The previous hauler was doing that at no cost.
Other questions?
Dan. Thank you. On that same line, according to the sheet here, the current hauler has no cost for that either.
They don't have the fee in there. It's $5.
So Coeur d'Alene Garbage is charging $5, we're charging $5 and a quarter.
Correct.
Okay, because it just wasn't listed here what their fee was, which made it look like, made it look weird. Troy, what's the justification for the profit, the difference between what Coeur d'Alene Garbage is charging and what the city is charging?
Overhead that the city has to handle this, bill it, do the customer service that we do.
So the, the fees tend to be rather, I'm going to call them inconsistent, they're not a percentage. They're, it looks like they're kind of arbitrary on some, for example, you have a, I mean, the, the time charge per minute, so Coeur d'Alene Garbage is $2, we're $2 and a quarter, which is 1/8, but then you go up to some of the higher fee stuff, and like $300 fee from Coeur d'Alene Garbage, our fee is just $3.05. So is it just based on per incident, then?
Per incident, yeah. We're not running a flat fee above where these commercial rates came in at. We could do that, however, we have good cash flow coming from other line items in this particular utility.
Is, is there math that justifies the, the increase, the difference between their fees and what we charge the consumer?
Well, we could do the math on each line item. The real driver in the math would be the volume, and I can share with you that the time charge per minute for that, I don't think we billed one of those in the last three years. So many of these do not have any volume behind it, so there's not any real revenue, but we don't want to have a fee that we subsidize if a customer chooses to use it.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Amy.
Backing up again, how many residents ask for an extra recycle bin? Do we have a number there?
We will know better after we get through the routes as we look to see what number are out there. We didn't think there was very many at this point in time because it takes up extra space, but we do have some customers that have them. So I don't think it's probably 50 at this point, but I'm estimating because we did not bill for it, we didn't keep track of it, and Waste Management just did a really nice job of being gracious and delivering a second cart and no charge.
And this is a monthly $5.25?
Any other questions for Troy? Ron.
Yeah, Troy, you know, in the new contract, you know, that, that we have, we're supposed to supposedly save money with this new contract. Why is it necessary, then, to raise the fees for the... Why is it necessary, then, to raise the fees for the commercial?
I would suggest to you that we do not want to subsidize this fund any more than we already have, and thus we want every line item to be break-even or better. I don't believe that a residential customer that is paying for their service should be subsidizing a commercial customer for a service. So as I'd shared with you from the very beginning, we had bids on this contract that were higher than what we were charging for these individual line items. And so if I was not clear on that, it was clearly done throughout this process. When we looked at who the low bid was, very few of these even appeared, because there was no volume behind these when they made their bid. We specifically looked at about 22 different line items. None of these were in there. So as you know, we gave all of our current fees to the proponents, we gave them what we were billing it out at, and so then they came in with 110 different line item bids that were included. And at that time, no matter who we went with, we were gonna have certain line items that we were less than what the bid was at.
Do you look for any other increases, say, in the commercial or residential in the near future?
Well, we will, we have built-in increases going forward that we will look at. Residential should stay solid, as we've said. That one was a very aggressive bid that this proponent brought forward, and it will save that utility money over time. There's a couple variables in the contract, which talks to fuel prices and labor prices, and there's a minimum in it. So I don't have a real exact number, but yeah, we look at it so that we can cash-flow it. Once we know what we're gonna do with glass, we'll have a real good idea of what this enterprise fund will cost us on an annual basis.
Troy, I had a question. Just on average, our garbage bill in a month is a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Of these items, of that couple hundred thousand dollar piece, approximately, maybe you don't know, is this just a minuscule part of that couple hundred thousand dollar piece?
Definitely a minuscule part. In fact, again, cleaning and sanitizing, which are 11 of these line items, I bet we didn't do five in the last couple of years. It's just not a service that's out there, but we can do it, and it was in the old contract.
So this is a matter of going through these costs and making sure that the cost that Coeur d'Alene Garbage is charging us, that what we're charging the customer is not less. But in the big picture of a couple hundred thousand dollars, this may be less than $1,000 even a month, if that?
It could be, especially in the winter.
So a pretty, it's a pretty small piece, but you're just making sure that the costs that we're charging exceeds the cost that Coeur d'Alene Garbage is charging us?
Exactly correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Kiki.
I have two things. One is, I think you're going down the road I was. It's real difficult to make this decision when you don't really have the dollar amount that it really affects. And it feels like we don't want to subsidize, you know, these fees with the big savings we had for residential, but it almost feels like we're subsidizing our glass piece by increase in commercial rates. So I just, you know, I just kind of had that and no way to really find out of that monthly bill. How much is this, is just in the commercial, I think you said 27 line items that are actually used? How much money does that represent? And how much of an increase? Because I'm looking, it was like 13%. Is that anywhere close? Because I'm trying to put this together.
Well, there's no volume in these 22 line items that will throw any real revenue to help offset glass. So I can guarantee you that as you look at a $300 expense for a four-yard container, and we're charging $3.05, you know, there's no money in that at all. So the residential fee will help offset the glass. So we are not going to get caught up in commercial having subsidized residential, and then you're living the vice versa.
Okay. Then my other question was, and I mentioned this to you earlier, why, two phases, the porta-potty permit line item being in with the garbage rate increases, why? Is that that way? And then if a person wanted to find out the permit fees for the porta-potties and that, would it be able to be extracted from how this is laid out to us today?
Absolutely, yes. I apologize, however, the timing was so good to get a new fee in a public hearing done that we swooped up any fees that might be out there. And the portable toilet permit is one that we swooped in here so that Troy could talk about that, and you could ask that good question. And yes, it will be attached to that ordinance so that people know where it's at.
Okay, so this is kind of a housekeeping thing. It's not really part of the garbage rate thing. It's just a...
Totally a timing thing, based on the public hearing for a new rate or a 5% increase.
Just want to make sure we're not sneaking by some porta-potty fee that nobody could find again, so.
Any other questions for Troy? Okay, we'd be looking, oh, Ron.
Yeah, Troy, just say that, say that this doesn't pass tonight. What happens?
If this doesn't pass tonight, the city of Coeur d'Alene will be subsidizing all of these fees for customers that ask for those services. We will lose money every time one of these services is requested.
Any other questions for Troy? Amy?
I have one more, and I'm sorry to belittle this point, but the extra recycle bin, that I'm still uncomfortable with adding that fee. I wish I had the contract in front of me, because I thought we had some safe walls there that additional fees could not be charged to residential. And we could do a rate increase to a certain percent in a certain amount of time, I understand that. But this is a significant monthly charge, if someone wanted an extra recycle bin. So somehow I'm missing how this is slipping in.
Well, what we found was, we went with the contract as close to the old contract as we could. So we gave all the proponents a list of the services. That was not a service that the city was charging for, the hauler was providing it. The new proponent came in and said, "I understand you have multiple carts out there. I will do that, and this is the $5 per month fee that I will charge to do that service." So I guess if we could go back and have thought through the fact that we don't have a fee for a service and ask them to be able to give us a second cart, that would have been the time to do that.
So the fee for a second cart wasn't included in the bid when it went out?
We've never had a fee for a second cart. We've never offered that. Waste Management was just doing it out of the goodness of their business acumen.
Again, Troy, how many, how many people have second carts?
That's a great question. I'm guessing 50.
50 out of how many customers?
14,000.
Amy, if we want to, because we are the council, we can go ahead and approve everything but that fee. And then just, you know, I mean, Troy's right, we would eat it then, wouldn't we? Because they would be charging us $5 for every time one of those extra carts comes out, and we would be collecting zero. So if we want to, we could make that part of the motion, and if that makes you feel comfortable.
I understand what happened. I just want to be able to explain it to the community. So I understand it now, thanks to your clarification, and I appreciate that.
No, you're very welcome.
But I understand it's a small percentage, too, 55, you know, we're looking $250-ish a month.
Dan.
Well, just comments. As I look at this, I, I think we're talking about the concept of user fees, and I support that basically, I mean, the user fee should pay for things, and it looks like, you know, if I were a commercial customer, maybe I wouldn't be wild that it's gonna go out, but I would expect that. I guess as far as the extra container, I think it's very appropriate, I mean, everybody gets one, and frankly, for me, if you want to go beyond that, you know, kind of built-in baseline, that's an option, and frankly, I think it's reasonable that they pay for a second one rather than be subsidized by everybody else. I guess on that case, I think this is reasonable.
Any other questions? We would be looking to craft some council action.
It is a legislative hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, well, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this? We'll open up the public comment. None seen, we'll close public comment.
There you go.
Now we will go on to council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 16-033, which is approving the Finance Department fees related to commercial garbage collection rates, extra pickup rates, temporary services, container rental fees, cleaning and sanitizing rates, and a new fee for an extra 64-gallon recycle bin at $5.25 a month, as well as a new fee for a portable toilet permit at a rate of $50 per permit.
We have a motion. We have a second on that.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, so Amy, if you wanted to, we can modify the motion to pull that out if you think that's unfair, but I do think Dan brings up a good point, which is that everyone else in the city would be subsidizing those folks.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate Dan's comments, and I actually agree with your comments. I just wanted a full explanation so we can explain it to those 50 residential customers if asked, because we did promise that residential rates would not be increased. And this is, in my opinion, an additional fee could be looked at as an increase by some, so.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Oh, me, no.
Make it, I'm sorry, Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Now we'll be looking for a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move into executive session as provided under Idaho Code 74-206, Section F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Adams?
Adams? Sorry.
That's about the third time.
I'm sorry. English? English?
We're doing so well, Amy.
Miller?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into executive session.